Okay, welcome to Mahopac community to our March 17th St. Patrick's Day School Board meeting. Would you please, could I get a motion, please, to open the meeting? Vice President Savino, second, please.
Second.
Second, Senior Trustee Missafer, all in favor?
Aye.
Please stand me, uh, please, go into the plane. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The Mahopac Central School District Board meetings are business meetings to address the work of the district. The meetings are guided by a sense of order, civility, and decorum. In addition, there are rules that must be followed during public comment. These include refraining from personal attacks or criticism of any person connected with the district, and refraining from commenting upon or identifying district staff or students by name or situation. I remind the community that the district has policies and procedures that govern communications. If you have a particular concern regarding your children and their education, please reach out to the school principal or assistant addressing the matter. Thank you. What I'd like to do is turn it right over to our Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Anthony DiCarlo, and he's got some introductions.
Thank you very much, President Maung. As you're aware, Mayapac Central School District and Mayapac High School, they have an incredible trade program with Putnam Northern Westchester Voces. And, you know, we send multitudes of students up to a Voces program, most of which starts in junior and senior year. I think when we talk about Mayapac and Mayapac High School being a comprehensive program, we understand the importance of trades more so now than ever in our society. And, and we have a great partnership with PNW Voces. And we continue to have students who are recognized for their hard work in the CTE program. And each month, Putnam Northern Westchester Voces recognizes a student. And the Student of the Month of recognition for last month goes to Angel Santos from Mayapac High School. Is Angel here tonight? Here he is, Angel DeVigilante. So what we're going to see right now is a presentation from PNW Voces for the recognition of the work that Angel is doing and being awarded the Student of the Month. So without further ado, we will go to the video and celebrate Angel and his recognition from Putnam Northern Westchester Voces. Thank you.
Good evening. It is with great pleasure that I join you to announce this month's recipient of the Putnam Northern Westchester Voces Student of Distinction Award. This significant achievement is for students recognized by our staff for outstanding performance and personal growth. I also want to take a moment to thank you for your continued support. We value our relationship with your school district and look forward to continuing to serve your needs. And now for the Student of Distinction Award.
Good evening. I'm here to recognize Angel Santos, our Student of Distinction from Mayapac High School in our animation program at Putnam Northern Westchester Voces Tech Center. Our Animation and Motion Graphics Program is a high-end program where students do a lot of complex computer programming to produce similar things that you see on TV today as animation. Angel definitely stands out among the rest of the students. He's a dedicated student, his work is superior, and he's a leader amongst his peers. It's my pleasure to congratulate Angel Santos, our Student of Distinction from our Animation and Motion Graphics Program from Mayapac High School.
Angel, once again, congratulations, you do us proud. And this, this is the kind of student that years you'll see if you look at Pixar and Disney and the animation that goes on. This is where it starts, a passion for the arts, somebody who clearly, you know, wants to do this in life. And I think Angel is a real tribute to you. I mean, all we see now is movie after movie, and it's all about animation. It's all about realistically looking at people, and it amazes me when I look and see. It's like being live, it's being able to touch it. So it's a credit to you, your passion for the arts. And again, on behalf of myself and the Board of Education, we congratulate you. And we're honored that you've been honored as the Student of the Month at Putnam Northern Westchester Voces. So Angel, once again, congratulations. So we continue on. Tonight's a night of celebration for our students at Mayapac High School. The next young lady that I'm going to ask to come up to the podium is Jenna Mayer. A little bit about Jenna and her passion. So as you're aware, last year, we had Max Semagran really take on a challenge of working with cancer, and specifically leukemia and lymphoma society, and starting a campaign. And Jenna really admired the work that Max did. She also has some personal connections with cancer throughout in her family and wanted to continue really helping others. And it's the biggest gift that you can give, especially as a, as a young adult, is to be able to help others and to go out and really care about and fundraise for such a great cause. So Jenna's going to spend some time tonight telling the community, the board, a little bit about what she's done and really a testament to who she is as an incredibly young lady who's got a passion to help others and what a great gift to be able to give. So Jenna, I turn it over to you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening to the Mayapac Central School District Administration, the Board of Education, and the audience that we appear tonight. My name is Jenna Meyer, and I am currently a senior at Mayapac High School. For those of you that may not know me personally, I am the student body president of the high school, and I love getting involved within the community. It is because of this that I got involved with what I'm here to talk about tonight. This year, I ran a seven-week philanthropic campaign through the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society's Students of the Year Campaign. The Leukemia and Lymphoma Society, or LLS for short, is a nonprofit organization that accepts donations for blood cancer research and advancements in treatment. They have provided billions of dollars in funding since their founding in 1949. I was so glad to be the candidate this year representing Mayapac because last year I was a team member of Max Semagran's team in honor of his brother Ben. I was honored to carry out Max's legacy and continue this fight against cancer while representing my community. You may have heard about this campaign on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, through an email, or even in the Mayapac News. My team, Team PAC, which stands for PAC Attacks Cancer, did some incredible things over the last seven weeks that I am so proud of. We ran several community-based events, and in the span of seven weeks, we were able to raise over $32,000 for blood cancer research. This experience has taught me lessons that I will carry with me forever. I've learned an immense amount of leadership skills, new methods of outreach, and how to step out of my comfort zone and make a difference in the world. I would like to thank everyone that supported me along the way, whether it be through a donation or even spreading the word for me. I appreciate the Mayapac community, and I know I can always count on it. My generation is the future, and I know we will make it bright. With that being said, I hope I can find someone to carry on this legacy of representing Mayapac for such an amazing cause in the fight against cancer. Thank you again.
Thank you, Jenna. And interesting enough, Jenna, you talk about leadership and what you do with leadership. And there was an article recently, and I want to say it was in New York Times, and they surveyed students across the country. And one of the big discussions that has had is really understanding about leadership, and especially in, in high school, and how it can transform you become as an adult. So it's a credit to you, your family, of course, who has been so much important to become who you are. So thank you for your leadership, thank you for giving to the community, and I'm sure we're going to hear great things about you down the road. So Jenna, congratulations. Next up, we're going to recognize Grace Gano. And I will tell you, we participated this past Sunday in the St. Patrick's Day Parade, which had been in my age just for a couple of years. And I had a great conversation with Grace, and I told her we were going to recognize her tonight. Her face just lit up. And let me explain to you why we're recognizing this fine young lady and her accomplishments in the arts. We are very proud of this 12th grade music student, Grace Gano, for her recent participation in a New York State Band Director's High School All-State Honor Jazz Ensemble that took place from March 4th to 8th in Syracuse, New York. During the spring of 2021, Grace performed a Level VI clarinet solo and a Level VI alto sax solo at the New York State Music Association's adjudicated solo festival. This is the highest level possible. She received a perfect score of 100 on her clarinet solo and a 99 on her alto sax solo. This alone is a highly commendable accomplishment. Based on these scores, Grace was selected to perform in the All-State High School Honored Concert Band and the All-State High School Honored Jazz Ensemble. Grace ultimately chose to participate in a jazz ensemble where she was one of only, again, only two alto saxophone players selected statewide. She represented the Mayapac Music Department, Mayapac High School, and the Mayapac community at large extremely well and rehearsed her ensemble under the direction of world-renowned saxophonist and bandleader Roxy Cox for three days. The weekend concluded with an amazing concert performed to a packed house and an enthusiastic crowd. Great Grace was featured with two solos during the concert. Upon return to Mayapac, Grace learned that she was accepted to her top college of choice, Ithaca College School of Music, which was awarded, and she was awarded a very generous scholarship. Grace plans to continue with music and become a music educator in the future. We congratulate Grace for all of our hard work and our accomplishments. We're extremely proud of her. Grace, great job. Come up and tell everybody who you're about to experience.
Thank you. First, I would like to thank the district for sending me to Allstate. Your support is greatly appreciated. Additionally, I want to give a huge thank you to our high school's music teachers, notably Mr. Williams. You all work incredibly hard for our music program, and without your guidance and instruction, I would not be playing at any sort of state level. So I'm very grateful. My experience at NISBA to Allstate was extraordinary. As Mr. DiCarlo said, this was a weekend-long event where we rehearsed for six hours a day under the direction of Roxy Cox, a female saxophonist, composer, and teacher at the Juilliard School. As you can imagine, I learned so much from her over these three days and was extremely inspired working with a female jazz musician for the first time. She offered a great perspective to jazz, introduced me to new music, and even in three days, made me grow so much as a player. In addition to playing music, I also got to experience live performances from the Crane Latin Jazz Ensemble, as well as the U.S. National Guard Band from the 42nd Infantry Division. Both performances were so much fun and so inspiring. Lastly, I got to meet a ton of other young musicians, including some people I'll be going to music school with next year at Ithaca College, and even some potential roommates, which was awesome. All around, it was an incredible musical experience that I will always remember. Thank you so much.
Grace, again, congratulations. And I want to thank the Board of Education, and I want to thank the community because as a part of that $54 million bond that we passed a number of years ago, I had talked about the importance of the arts. And, and I think sometimes we don't recognize where our, our, our students in this music department at Mayapac High School are going to the top music schools in the country. So this is really a tribute to the dedication of our, our staff. But most importantly, you parents who have kept that alive from the time they talked about wanting to bring an instrument up and play it. You know, it really harkens back to your love for music and you're continuing to encourage your son or daughter to play. And then here's a perfect example, Grace. So those of you that are out there that are just starting to take an instrument, or parents that your, your son or daughter is just telling you they're thinking about playing a specific instrument, encourage them. It's, it's a passion that needs to be nurtured, and the sky's the limit. So Grace, once again, congratulations for, for a great accomplishment. President Maung, back to you.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. DiCarlo. Congratulations to all the, to all of our students, just amazing accomplishments all the way around. We have some housekeeping to do over here. We didn't, with regards to comments on agenda items, we didn't receive any comments on agenda items for this evening. So I'm going to jump down to the, to some of the housekeeping that we have to do for this month. So I need a motion to accept for the treasurer's report for January 2022. Can I get a motion to accept, please?
So moved.
Trustee McCracken, second?
Second.
Senior Trustee Missafer, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Warrants for January 2022, motion to accept, please. Senior Trustee Missafer, second?
Second.
Second, Trustee Vendulua, all in favor?
Aye.
Revenue status for January 2022, motion to accept, please.
So moved.
Dave Fafaro, thank you, David, second, please?
Second.
Second, Ray McDonough, all in favor?
Aye.
Budget transfers for January 2022, motion to accept, please? Trustee Missafer, second?
Second.
Vice President Savino, all in favor?
Aye.
Minutes for December 21st, 2021, motion to accept, please?
So moved.
Trustee McCracken, second, please?
Second.
Second, Trustee Fafaro, all in favor?
Aye.
Lastly, our minutes from January 27th, 2022, motion to accept, please? Vice President Savino, second?
Second.
Second, Trustee Fafaro, all in favor?
Aye.
I turn it back over to our illustrious Superintendent of Schools, a very happy Superintendent of Schools, given, given tonight's presentations and, and the lowering of the mask mandate, so can you take it away?
Thank you very much again, President Maung. So just a quick reminder, everybody, the Board of Education and myself have been involved in the last basically two months, starting to look at our '22, '23 school budget. And I just want to remind everybody that which we have in the last four years, this is actually my fifth budget, believe it or not, we want to continue to create a budget that will allow our students, again, as you saw tonight, to receive a world-class education while maintaining our current programs and proactively planning for the future. We will continue to make sure that we are sensitive and stay focused to present a budget that is under the tax cap, but allows us to continue to align our strategic plan in order to achieve the highest quality of education we can here at Mahopac. Just a reminder, on March 29th, will be an open discussion down at the fall school. Again, we invite the community to come, listen, share thoughts and ideas, because within two weeks after that, there'll be a, you know, a, a final adoption of the budget for next year. So it's important that we get your thoughts, your ideas, again, on March 29th. It's important. Also, just a reminder, April 1st is approaching us. Attention to those may have had, parents who have students who attend both non-public and private schools. Your transportation requests need to be received by April 1st for next year, regardless of whether or not you receive transportation. Now, this year, that's an annual type of form that needs to be filled out. It's important because it helps us plan for next year's budget. Speaking, Mike, of great things happening, you know, back in February, I got an email from Mr. Perr, "Mr. DiCarlo, what are we going to do about the snowball?" You know, scheduled originally for February, and I just happened to say, "Well, let's postpone it a month," having no idea that we would be able to have a massive option. So I, I just want to thank Mr. Perr. I want to thank all the teachers that were involved in organizing and setting up Snowball 2022. You know, it's sad to say that we had to put that on hold for two years, but this is the second year we've done it again, a great success. The students who attended had a great time eating and dancing, and it was a wonderful night. So again, congratulations to all those who helped organize that. Congratulations to junior Megan Blumer. She's a junior in our Science Research Program. She just received news that her research entitled "Adverse Childhood Experiments: Effects on E-cigarette Usage in 18- to 30-Year-Olds in the United States" will be published in the Journal of Emerging Investigators. So again, incredible, great honor. Once it's published, Ms. Stevens will send it out so that we can take a look and share in that great accomplishment. But again, congratulations, Megan. Again, here's a program at Mayapac High School, research program, that we have at, at our comprehensive high school, and our kids continue to achieve really high accolades in that program. Also, just a quick note, we got, received information last month from the state with regards to graduation rate. And we've had, last year, 2021, was our highest to date. We had 96.4% of our seniors graduating. So it's, again, a tribute to the work that's being done up at Mayapac High School. The next update, if you remember, last year, our girls' softball team won the sectional championship, first time in school's history. And I just had been searching over the weekend and looking at ESPN, and then I saw a clip on Shannon Becker. So just a, a quick update on Shannon Becker. She continues to do incredible stuff at the University of Notre Dame. She is 6-1 with the lowest ERA as a freshman on her pitching staff. She has had an incredible season to date, dominating most of her opponents, especially in the ACC, where she had a big win this past weekend, where Notre Dame defeated University of Virginia. So once again, congratulations to Shannon and our continued success. Also, this past weekend, opened up a, at Garrison Art Gallery. We have a number of our students who are presented there for the Garrison, Garrison Art Center Exhibition. It's open up on Tuesdays and Sundays from 10:00 to 5:00. So please feel free over the weekend, if you want to get up there and take a look at the work that's going on. Behalf of the students at Mayapac, again, in the arts, please go up and take advantage and see the great work that's being done. And last, but not least, in this building, we will be having Little Mermaid tomorrow night, 7 o'clock, the middle school production. And then on Saturday at 2:00 and 7:00, it'll be taking place here at the middle school. And President Maung, you talked about masks, a mask being on. I just want to share with the community a little bit about last Thursday night, March 10th. We had two great events that took place here at the Mayapac Central School District. The first was our family E&amp;L night for our E&amp;L families. And everybody needs to understand, we have had families in our community that haven't been able to come into schools who are brand-new. We've been here for two years, never been able to connect faces with people. I mean, everybody gets my updates on Fridays, but, you know, they see me on the spotlight, never were really able to connect. So we had a wonderful turnout. I want to thank Mr. Travé, Mr. Gaglione, for helping organize our E&amp;L night. It was a great night for parents to come in and learn about the resources that we have here as a school district, but also the resources that are out. Not only a Mayapac button in Putnam County, it was a, was a wonderful night. And to see the faces of our, our families coming in and, and understanding what's going on. I have to tell you, in Spanish, because most of those who were here happened to speak Spanish, and yo hablo español bastante bien. Cuando está blando, so when you're talking with them and they're saying to you, es increíble that my son or daughter has been here for two years, and the English that's being learned in the Mayapac Central School District is incredible. So again, a tribute to our E&amp;L department and all the work that's being done. And then that night culminated with our Pops concert at the high school, AKA where I saw Grace perform. What was great about that night was it was a combination of large group, you know, ensembles, local ensembles, groups of students who just get together and decide to play and put together a, you know, a piece, and then come out and perform in front of a packed house. And then at the end of the night, we had the jazz bands play, and we had a little soiree, and parents came by. And I just have to tell you, just the incredible outpouring of being able to see people, being in, be able to interact, and then parents just ecstatic that they're, can see their kids perform, not only parents, but grandparents and relatives. So it was a great evening all the way around. And hopefully, everybody out there were getting back to somewhat normalcy, and I can't be happier than that. So thank you all again, and I turn it back over to you, President Maung.
Great, thank you, Mr. Carl. Thank you very much, and thanks for all your efforts. Okay, a little bit more on the housekeeping side. We have a committee report from HR. Turn it over to our Vice President, Adam Savino. Adam?
Good evening, everyone. The HR committee met on March 9th for about an hour. In attendance was myself, Trustee Missafer, Fafaro, Assistant Superintendent DiCarlo, and Superintendent DiCarlo. We reviewed the tender candidates for this year, reviewed the list of resignations and some of the wonderful appointments to our district. It's great to see new faces coming to the district to continue our vision. And we have some wonderful new staff coming onboard. Those details can be in the, in our consent agenda for tonight. That's it, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Vice President Savino. Okay, what I'd like to do right now, we have new business. What I'd like to do is I'd, I'd like to, I'd like to pull, or postpone A and B so we can, so we can further discuss that. Can I get a motion to, to pull A and B so we can discuss it further later date? Trustee Missafer, second? Second, roll call vote?
President Maung, I'd like to motion a request for discussion. A motion? Can we have a discussion on this motion?
A discussion on the motion?
Yeah, the motion you just brought forth. For A and B, I'd like to discuss it further before the vote. So I'm motioning on a discussion.
You're going to need a second.
Sure.
Oh, sorry. All in favor? I mean, excuse me, roll call vote?
I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that it's just, we have a discussion on it, we need clarification.
Well, I think you have to vote on, I think we have to vote on, on the motion to discuss.
So there's two motions on the table right now.
Okay. Motion to postpone, and then a motion to amend.
Okay, so the motion to postpone?
Motion to postpone first.
I have a point of inquiry. Why is the, my point of inquiry, Mr. President, why is the motion to postpone the agenda item voted on before a discussion on that vote? I'm asking you to have a discussion on the motion. We, we don't have to discuss, a motion to discussion, we don't have to. But I think we should discuss what you're bringing forth before we vote on something like that.
The motion was to discuss it at the end of the term, right? So the motion is to discuss and postpone?
Well, postpone and discuss at the end of the term, yes.
So that's the motion?
That's the motion.
Is to discuss it?
Yes.
I'm looking to discuss it right now, because I don't know why this is, why these are getting polled. I'm more than happy to hear why it's getting polled, but you've led a motion on two agenda items that were approved, or excuse me, that were discussed at the work session. So I was just looking for further clarification of why we're doing this. So just a simple discussion of why it's happening instead of just instantly voting it on. I, I just, I got here at 7:00, this was on the agenda. I'd like to know why it's getting polled. That's why I'm asking for a discussion on this motion.
Well, we're already, we're already discussing, we already have to vote on, on the first motion.
Uh, sure.
So, Trustee Fafaro? Can I just postpone maybe, but just, it's A, B, and C, right?
He said A and B.
No, it should be C. Should, I'm sorry, should it be C? No, I'm just trying to help my guy. Yeah, I know, sorry, should be C as well.
I'd like to make a point of order. My, my point of order is that we got to an agenda item A, and there was no discussion. The president just brought forth a motion, and now the motion's being amended. I think we should just have a discussion on agenda item B, excuse me, A, for any motions are heard.
No, we clarified the first motion was to have the table for the special drive. So the first, the first motion is to postpone voting on these so that there will be a discussion? Right. That's the first motion, yes. And the second person was, who was second, right? Add. So that means that we want a further discussion, right? And then he asked for multiple, right?
Uh, just A and B.
No.
That was not the motion, that's my point of order.
So, so the motion proceed with that, that motion is second. So, Trustee DiCarlo? You're voting on the motion to postpone A and B for further discussion?
I, I make a motion that we amended, so we don't have to do this twice. If you want, I'm doing all three. I make a motion that would, would leave A, B, and C. I'm going to vote on that instead of doing this twice, is that all right?
Right.
Okay, so I'm amending the motion, that's okay. There's no way to do this twice.
You're saying not to amend it?
Do it once, right?
I'll second you.
Okay with that? So my vote is, I've changed, I don't want that.
So, so, right, so where was that?
Well, on A and C, and I've changed that to, I don't want that.
Trustee Dula?
I understand as well.
I'm sorry, the, 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 so many times, will you say it and then vote it out, I'm sorry. Postpone it? I vote to postpone, yes.
Yep, postpone, yes.
I know.
I vote to postpone A, B, and C for further discussion.
I have a point of inquiry. I have a point of inquiry. Can I explain my vote before I say it?
Can you what?
Can I explain my vote before I state my vote?
You don't have to.
That's my point of inquiry.
Yeah, you were going to say, yeah, and then you have to vote.
I was asking if I could explain my vote before I say it. Mr. President, 20 minutes?
No, this is just a vote.
Okay, I vote no.
Great.
Great vote.
I vote, yes, you're going to vote to postpone. So what's stated happened? So it's four votes for A and two of staying, two of staying, and one on board no. So the motion, so the motion to postpone, right?
So there's no intention to have a discussion on these materials? Because I think it's important for the public to know that these agenda items were ad hoc advocacy materials for budget season. I would totally respect and appreciate if a board member did not like the materials as is and voted no, that's their right. If the vote went down tonight, that'd be a lot better than just a table to further discussion. It's against transparency, it's not what we did on Tuesday. We had a discussion Tuesday. And this is coming from something that someone planned to abstain on these agenda items. I didn't even plan to vote yes. But what's frustrating is that we have a work session agenda, we discuss it. If there's concerns, should have been brought forth then. If there's concerns now, should have been stated tonight. This is another time when this board has motioned to table something. Last time we motioned to table something, it never came back again. That's disingenuous to the public, and I think we should have had a discussion with all the motion brought forth.
With all due respect, the conversation on these items will be in public as it were left. So I'm not sure what you're accusing of, but it's uncalled for.
There's also timeliness to what we were doing here. And if there was widespread opposition on Tuesday, I would totally understand if this wasn't on the agenda tonight. But it went forth after Tuesday night's discussion. And this is a timely agenda item. The budget must be passed in the year of April 1st. And if there was opposition, a vote of no, in my opinion, would have been way better than just tabling it, which we haven't even heard the reason for. So that's my point, and that's what I'm saying.
Can I just say something?
No, that's okay. We're going to postpone for a lot of things. All right, so I have a, so we have a donation. Senior Trustee Masahara, would you please read tonight's donation, please?
Sure, so our donation tonight is from the Fields Cop. Resolve Board of Education hereby accept the donation of the new 15.5-inch Pablo Lorenzo Viola from Fields Cop purchased for $1,620 to be used by the orchestra students in the Mayapack Middle School. Thank you so much for your donation.
Second question. Motion to accept the donation?
So.
Thank you, David, second please. All in favor? Thank you very much, okay? All right, and I need right now a motion to, a motion to accept tonight's consent agenda. Vice President Savino, second please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then we're going to come to our resident comment period. So what I want to remind everybody is the public comment period will not exceed 30 minutes. We ask all speakers to obey the following. Maintain the public deform appropriate for a school. Respect the three-minute time limit allotted for individual public comment. Address the president of the board, of the board. Conduct yourself in a civil manner. Obscene language, libelous statements, threats of violence, statements advocating racial, religious, or other forms of prejudice will not be tolerated. Comments and questions should be made in a respectful manner. The board, president will cut off comments, deep repeat derogatory, inflammatory, inappropriate, or out of order. And personal attacks or criticism by any person connected with the district will not be permitted. Okay? With that, Melody, could you please, could you please call our first speaker?
Kate Felletoni.
Kate?
Good evening. First, I want to say thank you for being so swift with opening up the cafeteria once the mandates were opened up. My son was so excited, and to do that within a week, thank you. Regarding the books, it's my understanding that a book committee is now being formed to review the 12 books of concern. As you know, I submitted challenge requests on most of these books due to the publisher's recommended age and how even the publisher of the book doesn't recommend it be accessible to the middle school student population. Ultimately, the committee, from what I've been told, will provide their recommendation to you, and you all will have the final say. That's correct, right? So I guess I'm just asking that you remember that these publishing companies are worldwide corporate establishments. They have departments and full-time employees dedicated to reviewing this exact thing. If you are trusting the publisher to provide the context within this book to our children, then why not trust them on their recommended ages that go along with it? Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
I have a quick question. I just reminded me of what we discussed on the work session. We talked about bringing forth two names, two residents for the book committee, and we said we're going to mention it Thursday. Do we have those names? Is that what we're doing at this meeting?
No, no, just, no, the idea was to get some, get some names together for consideration. One of the things that I did hear, Trustee, was that they, some of the people that were interested wanted to know what the type of commitment was, which I'll, which will get from Mr. Tramway.
Okay, so we're going to discuss our resident appointments per se at another meeting?
Yes.
Okay, understood.
Thank you, okay. Melody?
Jennifer Calamanico.
Jennifer, come on up, welcome.
Thank you, thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. I have some questions about the ad hoc advocacy committee, and I have no idea if it's related to what was just tabled. But just have a couple of questions and perhaps a comment mixed in. Trying to understand the role of the committee vis-à-vis setting policy. My, trying to read up on it, read the things that have been recommended. I'm trying to understand if this committee is setting policy for the district, recommending policy. I understand one of the questions is around getting better data from the state. Great, but who's interpreting those data? What are we doing with those data? I don't think any of the folks in that committee are epidemiologists or public health experts. So I'm just trying to understand how that information is going to be used and whether a position of a committee that is, by the way, not made up of broad representation of views in our community, are they setting positions of the district? You know, God forbid masks have to come back, COVID rates are going up elsewhere. Is it going to be the position of that committee to recommend the policy? Or is it going to be determined by experts trained? And so just kind of wanted to better understand how that committee is going to act.
Do you want to do that?
Yeah. If it's okay with Superintendent DeCarlo and President Maugham. So I'm the chair, with Tanner, Mike Maugham, and Mike Simone. I have representatives with the trustee representatives, right? So they do not set policy, we do not set policy, okay? Policy, and if, I'll give you a really quick timeline. On September 28th, the Board of Ed sets the committee up, and the purpose will be committed to monitoring federal state education initiatives and advocate for policies that are in the best interest of the Mayapack Central District. According to policy 226, any ad hoc committee may accept the Board of Ed, that can accept, reject, or return committee recommendations for further study. What is the purpose of this committee? I'm going to try to briefly read this. Assessing the impact of existing and proposed legislation as well as emerging local guidance of various issues, including COVID-19 and effective communicating and advocating. So what I did have intended to talk about is our success. So what we did do is put together a letter that came from the board, then asked for those specifications, then, of course, I finally have this. So at the end of December, we sent out a letter. At the end of February, we were here, and we basically put on the platform of the website. We put on a letter, a phone script, and a one-page address to send to elected officials. The role of the committee is not to set policy, it's to give recommendations to the board. There are no, as far as I know, there are no epidemiologists. There are eight people on there from the community, and four of us. And we report, myself and Tanner, report back to the board, and we send, we've sent out. Everything we've sent out is out, is on the website, okay? I can tell you, if you're interested, we haven't talked about this yet because we're still continuing to work on certain issues. If you're interested, please let myself or Tanner know, and we'll consider you interested in the board. If you feel there are some things that are going on, speak for my vote. If you feel there's something that's not being communicated appropriately and that doesn't represent your point of view, I think I'm going to speak for Tanner here. By all means, please let us know. Does that, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I appreciate that very much, appreciate the information. And I do think if they're interpreting the impact of policy on the community, it should be representative of a broader swath of the community.
Well, yeah, unfortunately, what happens is you invite people, and then people come. And if, you know, everybody's super busy and they can't come into things, nobody is dictating things. But if you look directly at what we put together, and I don't want to read it because it's going to take too much time, it's basically asking the state to give us control of making the decisions. So that was part of what we asked for. And in that request, we asked for the metrics. Quite frankly, they never really came out with metrics. It turned out on March 2nd, the end of February, which I was going to read off, how within two weeks of when we wrote this thing out, they changed the mandate. So good for us, right? We had a success. And March 2nd, she took it out. So, but the question is, Superintendent DeCarlo mentioned the other night, to us, is it could still come back, and yet we don't have any metrics. So the issue is not, we took the masks, everybody's happy, but three months from now, six months from now, it could come back. And so this issue is dormant, but we have a platform now that we want to go back and ask that. But if you have any other questions, I want to leave the point. Just let myself, Tanner, or anybody on the board know, and we'd be more than happy to help you out, okay? All right, thank you. Thank you.
Just also, just so that you'll understand, I think it's good information for the public. Anytime the board adopts a new policy or wants to, there's a public reading of it. So it would be an open reading and discussion of it. So at that point in time, there's always input from the public when it comes to that. So that's just another caveat piece to that down the road. It's important to understand, any policy that the board adopts has to have a public reading and discussion about it. You know, so there's always that check to that.
And there's also a terrific website that has the advocacy group too. There's a lot of good stuff on how the committee started and what their rebel cry is. And I will say it's been quite, it's been quite, in my opinion, it's been quite successful. I enjoy being on the committee, so thank you very much for the comment. Melody?
Dawn Kelly.
Dawn? Hi, Dawn, welcome.
Hi. I think it's, I just want to say to the students that were recognized tonight, congratulations. It's nice to see a lot of good things happening. My name is Dawn Kelly, I have a son in the high school, and I also have a niece-nephew in Palmer District. I'm speaking tonight in support of Kate. She has been the main speaker in terms of the books and coming up. But there's a lot of parents that feel the same way. I understand that there is a committee. My concern is that it's been over four months, and there really hasn't been any, any change or any progress. And so I'm hoping that this committee is formed in a relatively quick manner and that we can, you know, move forward. As parents, we are looking to come to a compromise. I think that there is this notion that we are looking to try to ban books, and that is what's being said outside of here, and I don't know what, you know. That's not what we're trying to do. We're trying to look for age-appropriate books for students that are educational. We're not looking to ban topics, we're not looking to do any of that. When you look at some of the content, if you have, some of it is pornography. It's sexually explicit, it's just not age-appropriate. So I just wanted to add that in here. I do know that at the high school, there is a display with three of the books that are in question. And so my question is, was this a display that was there last year? Or is this a new display? Because I do feel like that is a punch in the face to the parents that three of those books that are in question are on display. So I thank the board for their time, and happy St. Patrick's Day.
Awesome. Dawn, thank you very much for the comments, thank you. Melody?
Well, this one just came in a little late, Alyssa, we were done.
Alyssa?
Hello.
Welcome.
Good evening. So I'm glad that you clarified everything on the advocacy committee and the policies that we're not making them, that we are just part of it, bringing things to the attention and, you know, trying to see both sides to every point. As Dawn had just mentioned, it came to my attention yesterday that a few of the books were actually on display in the Mayapack on the hallways. It's like a showcase of books that are in question that we have brought up many times. I feel this as actually a very vindictive move, knowing parents are concerned about the sexual content in these books. The book titled Blue is the Tide is on display on the Women's History Month. In this novel, the content can cause severe emotional damage. It consists of incest, rape, and pedophilia. And the author is describing the events that occur from the predator's point of view. While children who are victims of sexual assault, molestation, and rape are trying to survive, this book has very, very detailed descriptions that actually might make them feel that they are reliving this drama, that they actually want to forget that. And I think that this can actually cause more damage. It's not a book written, it's not a psychologist. It's an experience that some may want to forget. The book actually was once a play in New York City, it had 12 performances. And from variety.com, it actually states that it is suitable for older audiences, not for younger teens. One girl about 14 was physically cowering during the rape scene and clutching onto her mother. That's part of, that's from the play, from the book. Now, while we know that most laws, right? Say we recognize adults at the age of 18 through emerging science, we know that the brain isn't fully developed till about the age 25. Yet we are exposing this content to our young teens. There are many science and psychology articles that I will actually be emailing to Mr. DeCarlo and the board that show the harmful effects books like this can have on children. The content is graphic, inappropriate, and damaging. The bottom line is, these are our children, we are the parents. And I'm not co-parenting with the government here. And just because someone has a degree, master's degree, doesn't necessarily make them an expert, doesn't make them intelligent. All you have to do is look at Congress like AOC.
Okay, thank you.
That's it.
Okay, thank you very much. And it does take a lot to get up and speak in front of the, in front of the audience, in front of the audience.
front of the audience, in front of the school board, in front of the community. So, I thank all the speakers tonight and want to continue to celebrate the, the award winners and the wonderful presentations and the good work that's going on in the community. With that, what I'd like to do is I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, whatever's left of that. I'm sure that there's some.
Thanksgiving.
I'm wearing the green. Sitting there like, I gotta wear it for all of them.
It should feel like Thanksgiving.
Yeah, Thanksgiving. I am thankful for sure, but it's St. Patrick's Day. Obviously, everybody looks for a green. Okay, in any case, can I get a, can I get a motion to adjourn so we could all go home and get some corn beans? So moved. That was trustee Masahara, second, was Mayor Coro in favor.
Aye.
Everyone be safe.